Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting of December 13th. Hopefully, the last council meeting of the year. Ms. Fister, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
And Councilmember Mum will be joining us shortly.
Yeah. So, we have four proclamations and salutations this evening. And I'm going to start with Councilmember Cathcart for Mike Coster. Councilmember Cathcart. And welcome, Mike, to our meeting.
Thank you. Whereas Mike Coster is retiring from the city of Spokane after forty-four years and seven months of service, having spent his career in wastewater starting in 1977 as a laboratory technician, and ending today as our long-term Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility Superintendent. And whereas in his four-and-a-half decades of service, Mike has led the treatment plant through a variety of changes and successes, most recently the years-long installation of our new membrane filtration facility, commonly known as the next level of treatment. And whereas Mike's staff describes him as honest and hardworking, with a dedication to the city that is unmatched, and the city's regulators praise him for open communications and consistent leadership, and we want to honor Mike and wish him well in his retirement that we know will be spent fly fishing, biking, motorcycle riding, and spending quality time with his family. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the city of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim December 13, 2021, as Mike Coster Appreciation Day. And, Mike, thanks so much for being here, and it has definitely been an honor to get to serve under your leadership on the serves board. It has been fantastic for these past two years. So, I'll turn it over to you.
I just want to thank everybody. I say it's deeply humbling to be on the business end of a proclamation, and that it's been an honor to serve the citizens who've stepped up over decades to improve the water quality in Spokane River. And gratitude is all on my part, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Councilmember Mum, I see you on the squares. All right. We just--
Hey, Council President, can I say something really quick?
Yes. Go ahead.
And I don't know if Mike's hung up yet or not, but I just want to publicly thank Mike. I've been around City Hall a lengthy period of time, and Mike is that guy that when you call with a question, or you have a citizen that has a concern or a question, you always get a response. And I just want you to know, Mike, that that is so appreciated, and I know that my constituents who have needed assistance or answers to questions, you have always been there for them, and I just want you to know that I value your experience and your professionalism, and I wish you the best.
Oh, I appreciate that. I've always considered I work for about 200,000 people. So, thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you. So, Councilmember Mum, welcome to the meeting. We just had our first proclamation for Mr. Coster, and then I believe you're going to read a proclamation for Symphony Week.
Yes, thank you. I think we just had some glitches in the system. I think, sorry, it took me a while to get on. But this is a city of Spokane proclamation. Whereas the Spokane Symphony, founded in 1945, under the name Spokane Philharmonic Orchestra, debuted seventy-six years ago on December 18, 1945, at the Masonic Temple Auditorium. And whereas Jim Kirshner wrote in his book, The Sound of Spokane: A History of the Spokane Symphony, the orchestra's story is filled with drama, turmoil, and emotion. The story has been littered with crises, close calls, and last-minute rescues. Yet the Spokane Symphony's story, stripped to its essence, is that of a community that has simply refused to let its symphony die. And whereas the Spokane Symphony, now entering its seventy-sixth year of continuous existence, remains committed to furthering the progress of arts and culture in our region, and today commits to being the most community-minded orchestra in America through its pursuit and achievement of artistic excellence on the stage at the Martin Woldson Theater at the Fox, and through community partnerships and meaningful relationships in Spokane and our surrounding inland northwest region. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the city of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, does hereby proclaim December 18, 2021, as Spokane Symphony Day. And we have a guest receiving this proclamation, and we just finished a fantastic event, both down at the mall and at the Davenport Hotel. It was so busy yesterday, you could not get through, and they were even selling tickets after four o'clock, so very successful. Hope you had a great time. Take it away.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. It's so nice to see you all. Appreciate to spend thirty seconds saying thank you. So, yes, so let me just explain a little bit. So, last year is our study fifth anniversary. Of course, because of COVID, we couldn't quite celebrate it the way we had wanted to. But this Saturday, this coming up Saturday, is again our birthday, and it is the day of holiday pops. So, Mayor Woodward is going to be down at the Fox with us on Saturday, and I believe we'll read at least excerpts, if not the whole thing, out loud for the audiences, and have a little celebration. So, it's a little something we can do, and I mean, it really, we really try to frame it that it's for the community, not for us. It's great to have been around for seventy-five years, although this last one was a pretty interesting one. I can go on and on, but we have all got those stories. And yes, the Christmas Tree Elegance event just ended yesterday, the thirty-ninth year, and you know what? It did pretty darn well. We had about 380,000 tickets sold, a little down from the record high of about 430-something a couple of years ago, but amazing, awesome testament to the great people in and around Spokane. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't want to take up too much time, but I really appreciate, I know all of you work really hard for your constituents, and I just want to say, it is really noted, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. And as this is likely the last meeting of the year, we are going to say goodbye to two very dear colleagues, Councilmembers Burke and Mum. And I just wanted, along with Councilmember Kinnear, to salute them and their work. We really can't sum up all that they have done in just a few seconds as a salutation, but just know, both of you, that we will miss you greatly, and we appreciate the voices that you each brought, and your insights, and all that we learned from you, and all that you inspired us. So, I'm going to read the salutation for Councilmember Burke, and then Councilmember Kinnear is going to follow with the salutation for Councilmember Mum. Saluting the public service of Councilmember Kate Burke. Whereas Kate Burke has represented the community members of northeast Spokane for four years since her election in 2017. And whereas Burke brought a much-needed, fresh perspective to the city council, and never wavered in boldly speaking truth to power. And whereas Burke served on the council's legislative work group, where her extensive legislative expertise and knowledge made the council's efforts more effective and brought millions of dollars in state appropriations to Spokane. And whereas Burke launched and led the community effort to redesign the city's flag for the first time in decades, which council adopted unanimously in June of 2021. And whereas Burke pushed council to do work related to landlord-tenant issues, including just cause eviction reform, which passed at the state level this year. And whereas during her time in office, Burke led an effort to ban so-called mosquito devices, which was passed into code in 2020. And whereas Burke has been a staunch advocate for the rights of all in our community, especially those who have been voiceless, and her convictions have often helped other council members to see a different point of view. Now therefore, I, Breehan Beggs, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute Councilmember Kate Burke for her service to the residents of District One and to the community members in the city of Spokane at large. Thanks, Kate. You can say a few words if you want. I know we didn't warn you, so, but if you have anything to say, you have a little platform.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for those kind words, Council President. It's truly been an honor to serve amongst all of you and our staff, and, you know, I've been under two different administrations, so kind of seeing different folks through that. I really do believe that this job has shaped me into the person I am today, and while, as you know, can be very difficult of a job, I wouldn't take it back to save my life. So, I'm happy I did it, and I'm happy I was able to serve our community, and, you know, excited to see what the rest of council starts to work on and what gets carried on forward. So, thank you guys so much for being colleagues with me and working with me on all sorts of different projects and initiatives. So, it's been an honor.
Thank you. And as you said earlier, there isn't enough paper to write down all the things that Councilmember Mum has done. We'll attempt to do it on one page, but just know that there's lots, lots more. Saluting the public service of Councilmember Candace Mum. Whereas Candace Mum has faithfully represented northwest Spokane for eight years since she was first elected in 2013, including for the last two years as Council President Pro Tem. And whereas Mum served as the longtime Chair of the Finance and Administration Committee, guided by fiscal responsibility, fully funding all key reserve accounts, protecting the city's bond rating, and saving millions in interest-saving costs. And whereas Mum chaired the council legislative work group, guiding the efforts of our state and federal lobbying teams to advance the city of Spokane's agenda and secure millions of dollars in funding for city projects. And whereas Mum's work on the council prioritized walkability and pedestrian safety, including authoring the city's first crosswalk ordinance. And whereas Mum worked closely with her seatmate Karen Stratton to publish the city's first gender and equity report in 2016, and continued the work on gender equity, including installing a mother's room at City Hall. Whereas Mum has been a staunch advocate for vaccination against COVID-19, and led the city's efforts to stand up vaccination clinics across the city. Whereas as a twice-elected president of the city's Plan Commission, Mum's expertise in land use and planning will leave big shoes for council to fill. Now therefore, Breehan Beggs, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute Councilmember Candace Mum for her service to the residents of District Three and to the community members in the city of Spokane at large. Godspeed, Candace Mum. We're going to miss you.
Thank you. Well, the good thing is I still live here. I still live in the community, as do many members of my family, and, you know, Spokane is always my home. I just want to say what a privilege it has been to serve with this council and the other council members. I recounted through my decades of working with the city, I have had the privilege and honor to serve under seven mayors, and many, many versions of the city council and the Plan Commission, and so I've met so many wonderful people along the way. And my one piece of advice is, please remember the children. They don't get to come to these meetings. They don't always get asked, and we have to remember their voices and what their needs are, because they need us to advocate for them, which is why I've always pushed for bigger parks, and safer routes to schools, and safer places for them to be, because I think how we treat our children is really how you judge your community and your society. And I also want to say how great I think the council has been over the last eight years. I've seen an evolution, a revolution and an evolution. We had the first female majority on our council, which I think has brought a new perspective in many of the decisions that we make. And also, I think it's changed. I think in the past, sometimes we saw council influenced by a lot of politics, politicians, and power brokers, and I think what we have here now is a council of the people, and I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton.
So, I didn't get to read the proclamation, so I get to say a few words. I want you to know, Candace, that I know the first six months of my term, I would have, I would not have survived without you. You were the leader, you were smart, you were gracious, and you taught me all the important things I needed to know to be a council member, and I want you to know it's appreciated. It's never gone unnoticed. I also want to thank you for your leadership, your commitment, your compassion, and most of all, that big brain of yours that got me through so many budgets and land use issues that I struggled with, but I can always count on you to have that solid square explanation so that I would understand what some of the issues we were dealing with are. So, I just want to say thank you. I know that we'll see each other again, and I will miss you very, very much. And Kate Burke, I want to tell you, you keep that spirit. You brought so much light to the council and so much compassion, and I know someday you're going to be back in this game, either on a state or local level, and you're going to change the world, and I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you, thank you both, from the bottom of my heart.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And now to the more mundane, appointments of boards and commissions.
Appointment of Alex Knox to a three-year term on the Human Rights Commission to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2024. Reappointment of Merle Iverson and Gal Heck Sweeney to three-year terms on the Ethics Commission to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2024. Reappointment of Carol Shook to a four-year term on the Plon Commission to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2025. A reappointment of Jim Simon to a four-year term as the city of Spokane representative on the Spokane Regional Clean Air Agency to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2025.
All those in favor of approving the appointment and reappointments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. All those people are approved. Thank you so much for your service, and if you have any interest in serving on a city of Spokane Board or Commission, you can go to the Boards and Commissions page on our website and find out all of them that are there, what the vacancies are, and almost all of them. You apply to the mayor's office, and the mayor will select people and forward them our way, and will interview you and vote on your appointment. So, thanks for that. And that brings us to emergency ordinances.
Ordinance C-36157, realigning parking services into its own standalone department, amending section 3.01a.253, adopting a new section 3.01a.254 of the Spokane Municipal Code, declaring an emergency, and setting an effective date.
There's no community requested comment on this. This undoes a pilot that we had where we put three departments together, Business Developer Services, Code Enforcement, and Parking. And this splits off Parking to its own department, given all the changes that are going on in Parking through the city and will go on. With that, any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I would just say, I don't favor the change, only because I think Development Services would make a lot more sense to be on its own department, and Code Enforcement and Parking are very closely aligned, I think, and I think those two can more easily share a department. So, for that basic reason, I'm just not supportive. But I do, if this is the change that occurs, it will benefit all three by giving a little bit more attention, but I just think Development Services would make the most sense.
Any other commentary? All right. Seeing none. I have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes six to one. Next emergency ordinance.
Ordinance C-36158, amending the duties and functions of the Community and Economic Development Services Department, amending section 3.01a.367 of the Spokane Municipal Code, declaring an emergency, and setting an effective date.
Again, there's no requested community comment, and many of you know that we have been able to hire a fantastic division leader for this division, Steve McDonald, and he has already enlivened things. And this just adds a little bit of language to his division description that makes it clear that the, you know, best economic growth is growing existing homegrown businesses. That's where the most jobs come from. So, focus on that, and a focus on family wage jobs, and also a shout-out to working with our public development authorities, our neighborhood business associations, and being a liaison with the tribes in our region as we work together for mutual sustainability and prosperity. Is there any council commentary on this? All right. Not seeing any. We'll have a council roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. That passes seven to zero. Next emergency ordinance.
Ordinance C-36159, establishing a new Office of Civil Rights, Equity, and Inclusion, adopting a new section 3.01a.252 of the Spokane Municipal Code, declaring an emergency and setting an effective date.
All right. We have several people who have signed up to speak, and one person who's signed up to speak in open forum, but I think meant to sign up for that, and that's Sherri Barnett. So, Sherri, I am going to call on you in a little bit amidst these folks if you can be there, and just if you are testifying, remember you need to be on the phone and following along on the phone, not the video, because the video has a pretty significant lag, and so we'll miss you if you're waiting to see me call your name as opposed to listening on the phone. And then you'll have up to three minutes. Please address your comments to me. Don't make anything personal to anyone, and please, nothing degrading or anything like that. When you get to three minutes, I will let you know, and then that, you just have to stop. We don't have time signals, and we don't have one of those video clocks that help keep you on track, nor would that work, given the delay. So, with that, I'm going to call the first three people's names. The first is going to be Roberta Wilburn, then Sandy Williams, and then Dale Whitaker. And Roberta, if, oh, the other thing is, when I call your name, hit star three, but it's really important with so many people speaking tonight, that when you're done, hit star three, and that lowers your hand. So, raise your hand by star three, lower your hand by star three when you're done. But Roberta Wilburn-- But Roberta Wilburn, welcome, well, please hit star three so I can welcome you. All right. Welcome to City Council, Roberta. You have up to three minutes.
Sorry. I think I hit it a little prematurely. The, this is Dale Whitaker. So you might want to unmute Roberta.
Well, go ahead, Dale, now that we got you. So welcome to City Council, Dale.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for having me. So as someone who is married to a black woman who has run a successful business in the Spokane area for the last two decades, who has a client base that is majority white, ranging in ages from 20 to 80, I struggle with the notion that the City of Spokane has a need to create free position, free positions costing taxpayers $400,000 a year for equity and inclusion. My wife and I have both previously received governmental assistance. And she received this assistance while she was black and felt in no way that she was discriminated against or had a hard time receiving said benefits because of the way she looks or the color of her skin. I fail to recognize how any person or persons would struggle to receive equity or be excluded in their need for assistance, employment or housing due to their ethnic, racial or social groups. To assume any individual is incapable or excluded because of their ethnicity, race or social group is the exact sport discrimination you're supposedly trying to eliminate with the enactment of this office. According to extension.org, who facilitate diversity, equity and inclusion training, equity is promoting justice impartiality and fairness within the procedures, processes and distribution of resources by institutions or systems. Inclusion is defined as outcomes that are met when you, your institution and your program are truly inviting to all. If the council accepts these definitions of equity and inclusion, then may I ask the council to provide us with an example or examples of current and existent barriers that act, in the access to services in any of the areas of housing, employment and public accommodations for any group of people that has resulted in the formation of this office? Does the council truly believe that the City of Spokane currently do not live up to the standards of those definitions provided regarding equity and inclusion? How does the creation of the Civil Rights Equity Inclusion Office provide protection against its own inherent and so-called unconscious biases and ensure the inclusion of all people? Counsel, the answer is that you cannot guarantee the elimination of all biases from all individuals. And therefore, the creation of this office is in vain as it can never live up to its established cause as it is run by people. And according to the standard that those people will be flawed, no matter whether they're in this office or another office. Counsel, I urge you to redistribute these funds to a worthy cause. You could double the SNAP benefits to those in need for single-family repairs on homes. This is not something the City of Spokane suffers and is not something the City of Spokane needs. The budget has already bloated. And I urge the council to not pass this emergency ordinance. And how this is an emergency is beyond me with all the other things that are going on. So counsel, I just urge you to, to reconsider and redistribute these funds to another area. Thank you.
Thanks for participating. And if you hit star three and lower your hand. And then I'll invite Roberta Wilburn, hit star three. All right. Roberta, we're not seeing you. I'll go to Sandy Williams. If you'd like to hit star three. All right. Welcome to City Council, Sandy. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you very much for creating the Human Rights Coordinator position and hiring Gerald Haynes in that position. I think that's a really important first step, something that I personally have been working on for years. Can't even count the years. So I just wanted to start by saying thank you for that. But this is really a big job. And it can feel like, like it's an invisible issue if it hasn't happened to you specifically. And so I'm here advocating on behalf of folks who need to have their voice heard, that this is an important issue and it is a critical issue. I don't think a week goes by as I'm publishing the Blacklands newspaper or as the executive director of the Carl Maxey Center, I don't think a week goes by when I don't get a phone call from someone who has experienced racial discrimination, whether it's been discrimination in their work, whether it's been discrimination in housing, whether it's been discrimination in school, whether it's been discrimination in business, whether it's been discrimination in the criminal justice system. And they're calling me because they don't know who else to call. And I don't have a lot that I can do personally. So there is a huge need. There's a need that has not been filled. And it's really important as a city that we make a decision that this is something that we want to address. I've always said that we find the funds for the things that are important to us. And where you put your funds is an indication of the values that the city holds. And this is really an important value. So I have joined the community coalition that presented what their vision is of a fully staffed and fully funded Office of Civil Rights. And I just wanted to throw my hat behind that. I think it's critically important. I think it's critically important that Spokane recognizes that this is an issue, that it's an important issue, and that, that our government stands behind that recognition and is willing to do something about it. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for participating tonight. And if you want to hit star three and lower your hand. And then the next person up, I'm not sure how to pronounce the name exactly, but it looks like it's Desur DeBarry. If you want to hit star three and... All right. Desur, welcome to City Council. And if you could introduce yourself so I'll know how to pronounce your name next time. You have up to three minutes. All right. We're not hearing you. If you're there, Desur. All right.
My name is Desur. I have been in the City of Spokane for a little over 20 years. This is my, I basically came back during the pandemic. And I guess I'm calling in support of this fully staffed Office of Civil Rights. I mean, Spokane has quite a bit of history of attempts and efforts at addressing any sources of hatred and whatnot. And it almost seems like, similar to various things that have been traumatizing folks, has been swept under the rug and then only to, for things to come back up again and re-traumatize. So I do feel like there needs to be more permanence in the way that the City of Spokane addresses these issues. A part of me does feel like it's an emergency, given various political climates and whatnot. But all the same, I'm mostly just calling to voice my support for something more permanent that deals with any sort of injustice, inequities and whatnot. So yes, to a fully staffed Office of Civil Rights, Equity and Inclusion. And yes, to especially whether, any sort of education and growth that city employees might need to make Spokane a more welcoming and inclusive place for all folks. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could hit star three to lower your hand. And then I'm going to call on Sherri Barnett. Sherri, if you could hit star three. All right. We're not seeing Sherri. I'm going to try Roberta Wilburn again. If you're there, Roberta, if you want to hit star three. All right. Then the next person I have on my list is Luke Ives. Luke, if you want to hit star three. And after Luke is Madhu and Kenneth Lee. All right. Not seeing Luke. Ken Lee, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right. Ken, welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, President Banks. I, I wanted to speak out in support of establishing this, this as an office in your government. I'd encourage it to be fully funded and fully staffed. We're living in a time where there's a lot of change going on. There's a lot of moving parts. But we still have issues to address that revolve around inclusion and equity and, and racism. We've got a jail that, you know, fills up with people of color in a community where there's not a huge population of people of color. We've got, you know, I, I, I'm a little humbled to be in the, in the, in this, this group of people that are testifying tonight. I'm glad that, that people have stepped up to, to speak out for this. We, we also, we have a group of people camped on your, on your, your porch there. And that's an issue of inclusion. These are residents and citizens that the federal courts are saying have the same rights and liberties as everyone else, yet a small group of business leaders are, are coming in to parts of our government to attack them mercilessly and illegally. And, and that's, I, I think we really need this office in this, in this government now so that we can, you know, move forward in a way that, in a way that, you know, it's got a legacy in a way that, that it's righteous. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to hit star three and lower your hand. And then I'd like to invite Madhu to hit star three to raise your hand. All right. We're not seeing Madhu. The next person I'd like to invite is Amber Oosting or Oosting. And after Amber is going to be William Neville and then Nicolette Occultree. So Amber, if you're there, if you can hit star three. All right. Not seeing Amber. William Neville, if you'd like to hit star three. All right. All right. Before I get to Nicolette, I'm just going to call through some of these names one more time. And I'm just going to call them all. So if I call your name, hit star three, please. Roberta Wilburn, hit star three. Sherri Barnett, hit star three. Luke Ives, hit star three. Madhu, hit star three. Amber Oosting or Oosting, hit star three. William Neville. All right. Okay. Then we'll go to the last person on the list. Nicolette Occultree, if you would hit star three. All right. Welcome to City Council, Nicolette.
Good evening. I can't help but think of my grandmother, Vian Smith, and how proud she would be tonight if she were still alive. Although I'm sure she'd be the first to say, it's about damn time. Vian led the Spokane chapter of the NAACP for 10 years. She was passionate and active figure serving the Spokane community for over 40 years. She fought loud and proud for civil rights at a time and in a place when it was incredibly dangerous to do so. In fact, she helped organize a rally in Riverfront Park in the late 70s protesting Aryan nations, which she recounted before her death to be one of the most terrifying days of her life. She believed education and community were the cure for prejudice and intolerance. And I believe she'd be proud of what you guys are doing today. As you know, I testified a number of times about the need to follow through with previous commitments made by the past administration to create and fully staff an Office of Civil Rights. Over the last few years, this need has manifested itself more clearly, even more clearly in our own community as well. Among the things I've most recently mentioned is the need for this office to be standalone, not a subset of NHHS, not merely a single position in HR, but an actual office as envisioned. In March, I filed a public records request for any and all emails to or from Mayor Nadine Woodward about the Office of Civil Rights so as to investigate what progress or lack thereof was being made. There were a number of troubling issues that came up with that public records request regarding, for example, the accessibility of records, seemingly unnecessarily delays in installments, having to be babysat by a member of the clerk's office while I viewed my first installment. And my latest issue, again, another seemingly unnecessarily, unnecessary delay with my third installment. I've never actually waited over nine months for a third installment of a public records request, not through the county, not through the city and not through other counties. Never before have I waited this long for a third installment. I was recently notified via email by the clerk's office that I will not receive my third installment of this public records request until January 3rd. Ironically, my first day in the office working for the city. It's hard not to interpret that as more than a coincidence. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And now I'd like to turn to council commentary. Who would like to speak from council? I know somebody does. Councilmember Kinnear.
I'll go. You've waited so long for this. And I remember adding it to the budget for the 2017 budget, 2018 budget, the 2019 budget, the 2020 budget. And it never got filled by one person. And here we are. And it feels almost anticlimactic. But what a great relief. And I'm proud that we're at this point where we can not only fund that one position, but actually a department that's going to move us closer to a compassionate community, a community who, who is inclusive and who values everybody and everybody's rights. And honestly, there was a time where I, I kind of lost hope. But here we are. I'm hoping that we can all support this. I think it's important, not just for us. I think it's important for the people in our community who don't have a voice. So kudos to all of us. And let's vote on this and make it a seven, zero. Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton.
Happy to support this. Thanks to everyone for their efforts. Just adding to what Council Kinnear said, I also think that this will be a great benefit to our employees inside City Hall. And especially that education piece where we can have a solid department in charge of issues relating to equity, all of that. Because we, we piecemeal it together for so long that our employees deserve it as well. So not only for the community, but internally for employees. I am very excited about this. And I'm, I'm glad that it's finally, it's finally going to happen. So thanks to everybody for their support.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Kinnear and Stratton. I support that. I just want to reaffirm that this office is just not a office for people of color. Civil rights affects everyone, whether it's your housing, your employment, your disabilities. So people who tried to couch this in that So people who try to couch this in that manner, that's not true. This will impact everyone, no matter what your race, religion, creed, color. And I agree, we need an internal-facing Office of Civil Rights and an external-facing Office of Civil Rights. But even most important, we need education because there's so much confusion about what civil rights actually is. And we could tell that by the comments we have been receiving around this position. So I am in support. A lot has been said. The community has spoken. I hear you loud and clear, and I will be supporting.
Any other council commentary? All right, well, I want to join my fellow council members and also say it has been far too long of a wait, but here we are, and it's so exciting. And I just want to give credit to so many people who have made this come true. We've had so many community members who have been meeting and dreaming and imagining the specifics of what an Office of Civil Rights equity and inclusion might look like. And they brought forth a written proposal. They have been at our meetings. They have met with the mayor. They've done so much organizing. And I also want to thank the mayor. The mayor hired Jerrel Haynes as our civil rights coordinator. And they've charged him with the task of fleshing out what this office could be and what it will mean for Spokane. And so there's, there's just so many people. And as Nicolette mentioned, the people who came before us, who have been working on this for years and years and years. And I also just want to concur that it's going to be externally facing, a place where you can make a complaint, where you can get an investigation, where you can get education about what your rights are, whether it's based on your race, your gender, your identity, your refugee status, your veteran status, your political speech. Or you're inside City Hall and you want to know how it can be more equitable and inclusive. And someone who's looking to see, you know what? There are things you don't even know that are problems for people. And that person is keeping their eye on it. So we have a crew of three people that we've funded to flesh out this office and figure out what it means. And as long as it's taken, I am inspired and comforted by the words of Martin Luther King when he said, "The arc of history is long, but it bends towards justice." And it is each person that has lent themselves to this effort that is bending that arc of history towards justice. So that in the near future, I hope, we will be able to say that we are living the reality that in Spokane, we all belong. With that, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Canir.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke. That's an aye from Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. All right, we are now to resolutions. And I think that's all we have are... Nope, and final reading of ordinances.
Resolution 2021-100, setting hearing before City Council for January 24, 2022, for the vacation of Perry Street from the north line of Hartson Avenue to the south line of Celeste Avenue, as requested by the owners of Liberty Park Apartments.
All right, this is just a resolution to set the hearing. So we're not really going to go into the merits of it. Nobody's requested to testify. Is there any council commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Canir.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2021-0101, approving settlement agreement and general release of all claims of F. Scott Garsky and Rebecca C. Garsky arising out of an incident occurring on April 13, 2020 in the city of Spokane as more fully described in the claim for damages, $87,500.
All right, we have one community member who's requested to speak to us, and that's Nicolette Occultree, if you want to hit star three. Welcome, Nicolette. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. I testified about this before in the past, and I just wanted to reiterate that I think that it is important that the claim for damages be included, if possible, in the agenda when you guys go to vote on this. Because if the citizens want to actually figure out what happened, they have to file a public records request to get a copy of that claim for damages. And that just puts a burden on the clerk's office. And if in the future you could consider doing what you can to make that claim for damages available to the public, or at least a brief summary of what the incident is, I believe that that would be a more effective way to allow citizens to understand what's going on and not have to burden the clerk's office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Seeing and hearing none. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Canir.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2021-102, approving the appointment of Jennifer Sarah Sidis as Director of Community Housing and Human Services.
All right, there's no public comment on that. Any council member comment? Councilmember Canir.
I got the opportunity to speak with her briefly. And I'm hoping some of the other council members did too. She seems like a great choice. I'm hoping she'll be a good addition to that department. And fingers crossed, I would love to see that department accelerate and do what they are best at doing, which is funding and helping our most vulnerable, not just people who are homeless, but people on the verge of homelessness. So fingers crossed, let's make sure that she gets what she needs to do her job and that she is the right person for that job.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I also have the opportunity to speak with this candidate. Very amazing. Looked at the system we have, not only for the people we're trying to serve, but for the employees in that department, how to build a stronger structure around compliance, meeting the needs, all the things that go into the amount of money that comes through the city through that department and that accountability piece. I look forward to her bringing not only her social service aspect, but her business aspect to this department. And I too am extremely hopeful that this starts a new chapter for them and for the city in this department and the people that we serve.
Any other commentary? All right. Yeah, well, I just wanted to add that I was very impressed. And I think in particular, what Jen brings to us is both working in the nonprofit sector in housing and working in the private sector, and just brings those two together to be very effective and very caring. So super excited. Congratulations to the mayor and Eric Finch for getting us to this point and getting someone in leadership. And we have several more people we need to hire in CHHS. And I know that Jen will do a good job of picking new people and recruiting people for us. So with that, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Canir.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that's seven to zero. And then I wanted to take the special consideration next.
S1, letter from the City Council to the mayor insisting that the mayor begin collection of wastewater utility tax due for county's operation of a wastewater treatment facility within the city of Spokane's boundaries.
All right, there's no public commentary requested. Councilmember Mum, would you like to tee that up?
Yes, this is a little bit of an unusual situation. Previous City Council decided to impose a tax on utilities that operate inside the city of Spokane. And subsequently, the county did build such a facility inside the city of Spokane. And we have a duty to impose taxes fairly and equitably. And based on legal decisions that have happened in other jurisdictions, it is clear that we need to execute that duty. However, the mayor is the person who is tasked with carrying that out and notifying the county that we need to collect that tax. So this letter just has us following the law. And we need to make that request of her. I have talked to her about it. I have talked to members of other jurisdictions affected. And the mayor has asked the City Council to take the lead in, after tonight's action, in bringing the groups together. And she is willing to participate in how this potentially could be rolled out.
Council commentary? Councilmember Stratton.
I have really struggled with this because logically, I get it. And I think there are conversations to be had, lots of conversations to be had. But I worry that this method of doing it is just going to stir up an already bad relationship or dysfunctional relationship with the county. I worry that there will be at least constituents in my district, especially regarding the West Quadrant Tiff. I think they're going to be stuck in the middle along with other constituents. I wish that we could have had a different outcome, that letters didn't have to go back and forth. And so I'm really struggling with this. I totally get it, but I just think I don't want more to add to that challenged relationship with the county. I said it, it's been going on a long time. We all know. I would like to see us come together next time in a different way to try and resolve some of these issues. We don't get anywhere when we just butt heads and, you know, fight each other. And there's so much of that going on right now in our city, in our state, in our country. And I just, I, this has been a really hard one to put my head around because I don't think it's going to help relationships. And I don't think it's going to be good for my constituents in West Central at all. And I think we've all experienced that. So I'll listen to other comments. But I thank Councilmember Mum for doing this because I know this is a big issue. It came up two years ago. And we saw what happened when it came up two years ago via the county and the comments that we got. And I just want to say publicly that I think it's time to put our swords down and try and figure out a way to get along and do some great things for the community and not have to go to these kinds of lengths to get something like this done that makes sense. And as I have been told, we have the law behind us on this. So that's all I'm going to say. But I just publicly worry that it's going to make an already tenuous relationship more difficult.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just piggyback a little bit on what Councilwoman Stratton said. I just think we should really focus on being good neighbors. And I think there are so many big issues facing us right now that are going to necessitate just an incredible level of regional collaboration. And if we, I guess, continue down this path, I think that's going to prevent that collaboration from happening. We've already seen a few things that have been held up. The West Quadrant Tiff is one example. And I think that if we can figure out a way to work as partners, both with the county, the valley, and others, that's going to benefit us so much more than pursuing this tax. And so I just think we can be good neighbors. Ultimately, this is a legislative decision. It's in our code. We can change the code. And I think that that's something that we should probably have a discussion about as to how this impacts our ability to get other high-level things done and if this is an obstacle. And to me, it appears that it is. So I will not be signing the letter to it.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. So I first heard about this when I came on council two years ago. People have made that point. And my understanding, we were saddled with this decision and to execute from a former council group who went into agreement with the county on this. We didn't do it, but we're here to like get to clean up the mess that was left by others before us. I do hear Councilmember Stratton and Cathcart. It has set up an adverse, or certainly an adversarial relationship in some areas, not all. My challenge is that the people of Spokane are paying this tax and others are not. And so then where is the equity in that? I agree, there could be more conversations. There could be another way. We could come together on something cool, huge, and regional. But we haven't had that kind of leadership from the administration or from the county since my time here on council. So if they are willing to step up and lead, then I would be supportive of that. But just sitting on the sidelines and kind of being that is really not a good way to be an elective legislative body.
Any further council comments? Councilmember Canir.
I've been back and forth with this. I talked to our budget person, Matt Boston, about this. And I was thinking one way and then started looking at the big picture. And to me, this is a way to get the conversation jump-started again because it's been stalling. And if we, as council members, can collaborate with the mayor and work with the commissioners, we might be able to come up with a good solution. But we have to get something in front of us so that we can move forward. And that's what this letter would do. And also, I'm really unclear as to what the West Quadrant Tiff and this have. I don't see the nexus here. Councilmember Mum, do you, is there something that we're missing here? West Quadrant Tiff and wastewater, I'm not seeing a connection.
Well, I think from discussing with a few people, there's just a general hope that there's more collaboration with the county because, of course, the city of Spokane and its 225,000-plus citizens all reside inside Spokane County. And we want to do what's good for everyone. I think what I'm hearing, and thank you, everyone who spoke, but what's always been on my heart is our citizens who are paying that tax. They are paying the taxes. And my hope is from these talks that should come after this letter, that maybe we can talk about actually lowering taxes for our citizens because we're adding more users in. You're right, the council has the ability to lower this rate. It was a different council that set this rate. And so in my mind, our citizens, all through the city, have been paying the full freight of this tax. And the other users who are on the facility, they've been getting a free ride. And so we represent them. We represent the citizens of Spokane who are paying that tax. And it needs to be shared with everyone in the system. And that's what the lawyers are telling us. So I echo the equity piece. And so... And so for me, that's why I brought this forward.
Councilmember Stratton?
I'd like to address the West Quadrant Tiff. Do you remember a couple, when was it, a year ago when that came up for approval? It went to the county. It's been on county commissioner's desk for signature. And then it was either the same meeting, we talked about the Tiff, or the next meeting, it came up for a possibility for revenue for the city. And at that point, I have been told several times by many, many people that the commissioners are not signing the mutual agreement, the Tiff agreement, because of that conversation that was had publicly, the city council, in enforcing that tax. So that's been going on, and we've all heard that, that that's kind of been being held hostage. And that's what I worry about.
Any other council commentary?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in. I support the letter because I don't see another way forward at the moment. As has already been mentioned, the tax on sewage treatment plants within the city limits was set many years ago, including by a current county commissioner, I believe. But the challenge is, in 2011, 2012, when the county and the valley decided to build a sewage treatment plant in the city, it was financially advantageous and engineering-wise advantageous. And they knew about the tax, and they came in, and now they've created a situation that's very challenging because we have to explain to one group of people who have sewer services in the city why they're paying a tax. And then another group, under very similar circumstances, not paying the tax. And to me, it's very similar if you had a new car dealership that came in and you said, oh, you don't have to pay the city of Spokane sales tax because we want your business here. That's not fair to the other car dealership and their customers. And so it's really a fairness and a legal issue. The courts have ruled on this that it should be paid. But it's just this dilemma of how do you get into the conversation? And I think the mayor convened a conversation with some regional leaders, and some city council members came. And we wanted to talk about it. We didn't have it set how it would turn out, but there's a lot of possibilities. And simply having the conversation led to what seemed like a refusal to sign a mutually beneficial West Tiff Quadrant Agreement and other things, that if we didn't sign a paper that said we weren't going to enforce the current law, we have lack of cooperation going forward. And so we already have that, which is why I'm on the, in the camp of sign the letter because already that's happening. I think there's a lot of opportunity because there's different kinds of agreements we could come up with. One could be forgiving the back payments, which are substantial now if we reached a new agreement going forward. Another could be a payment in lieu of taxes, which the county has done before with the city and other circumstances. A third thing, which I think is the most ambitious and perhaps beneficial, is we could agree that the money coming in would go towards regional problems, regional transportation. It could go towards solving homelessness. City of Spokane has become the place where most homeless people get services and get sheltered. And yet, our regional partners recognize that it's their people who are here as well. This money could go to really take care of that. Or criminal justice. We have a whole criminal justice complex that needs money to take people who are ready to get treatment and ready to reclaim their lives, and we don't have money to pay for it. And that would reduce crime, save money, all sorts of things. So there's a lot of possibility if we get past the point of simply refusing to talk with each other. So I want to use this letter to support the mayor in standing up to follow the law and really convening the conversation without a whole lot of investment in how it turns out. But let's just have the conversation respectfully and figure it out. So I think this letter will best serve that, but I don't see an easy way forward, and this is the best option of all the options I see. So with that, we'll go to a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Quick question, quick question. So the way this is written, then could our citizens sue us for not following the law? It just crossed my mind. So we're in one of those kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't positions from council. So if this letter just gets the conversation started, I'm in support.
All right, let's have a roll call then. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Nay.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Sinai. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, that passes five to two, which means five people will sign the letter. And I appreciate all the commentary and people being willing to step up and talk about moving forward regardless of how you felt about the letter. So thank you for that. Let's go back to ordinances.
Ordinance C36-160 relating to crimes involving drug possession and enacting new sections 10.15, .225, and .230 of the Spokane municipal code.
All right, we have two people who've signed up to testify. And just as a tee-up for it, some of you might recall that the Supreme Court declared our felony drug possession laws unconstitutional as written because they were strict liability and didn't have a mental intent to them. If simply any drugs were around you, you were guilty, whether you put them there or knew about them or not. The legislature responded by changing up drug possession laws, and their, simple drug possession is no longer a felony. It's now a misdemeanor, which the city of Spokane never had to deal with before. And they passed that misdemeanor, and they also said they wanted to emphasize getting people into treatment. And so if it's simply the crime of being found in possession of illegal drugs, the first, at a level of personal use as opposed to being a dealer, the first two times were required to refer people to drug treatment and other services and not arrest them or prosecute them. And after it's documented two times, then they can be, don't have to be prosecuted. And this law has worked with council and city legal and police to come up with a way to enact that state law consistent with our city code. And this would do, start that. And the plan is that although police would give one-pagers of potential treatment services, our justice services, which was formerly known as probation, would actually reach out to the people, find beds that were open and affordable and would meet their cultural and medical and psychological needs, and get them connected if they wanted and were willing to go to treatment, two times before they were actually prosecuted for specific personal drug possession. So that's the tee-up. The two people I have signed up are Ken Lee and Nicolette Ockletree. Ken, if you want to hit star three. All right, we're not seeing Ken. But Nicolette, I trust you're there. You can hit star three. All right, welcome to city council. Nicolette, you have up to three minutes.
I don't recall actually signing up to testify on this, but I can just say briefly that I think it's interesting when we choose to codify state laws into city laws and when we don't. And yeah, I don't have a whole lot prepared because I didn't actually sign up to testify on this, but thanks for your time.
Thank you. And if, Ken Lee, if you're there? Oh, I am so sorry. Kim Schmidt signed up, not Nicolette. But thanks, Nicolette. They are right next to each other on the signup sheet. Kim Schmidt, if you're there, please dial star three.
I am here.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you, President Biggs.
Yep, welcome to city council. You have up to three minutes. Thanks so much.
All right, here we go. My name's Kim Schmidt. And before I moved up here, I worked as a licensed drug and alcohol counselor for many years. And I'm calling tonight in support of this ordinance. It's really hard for me to keep it brief on this topic because I can and I have gone on about this for hours. But what, I signed up last minute, maybe that was some of the discrepancy there. But I just, I've been seeing comments about this online that are just really, they're troubling to me. So I wanted to call in and weigh in. So to touch on my own personal story, if a judge hadn't offered me treatment in lieu of jail time, I can say that I probably would have died behind my addiction. After my years of working in a rehab, my own 13 years of recovery, my own attending recovery meetings, I've met very few people who actually like got clean in jail or prison. Why is that? Well, drug use is rampant in jails and prisons. There's many reasons why people turn to substances, but when the person crosses the line into addiction, stopping the use can seem impossible. People need motivation to change. Getting clean and sober is hard, but staying clean and sober is even harder. Treatment allows the necessary, necessary time to work on yourself, separate from the using environment, to establish relationships with like-minded folks, to begin to build and/or put your life back together again, and a bunch of other really amazing things. And it's important to realize that not everyone will be ready to make the necessary changes the first time. But a system like this, and like what is being proposed in this ordinance, will at the very least plant a seed. If done right, it will provide the person with some basic knowledge of where they can go and who they can reach out to when they are ready. I used to work daily with clients who are on job search, and I've experienced this myself. Past criminal convictions can seriously limit job prospects, even if the person is well-qualified. This ordinance will offer folks a chance to turn their life around. Realistically, it won't work for everyone, but those who are ready will greatly benefit. It will save lives. Sometimes people just need a second, maybe even a third, chance to choose to change their life. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. All right, that brings us to the end of public commentary. Is there any council commentary? Okay. All right. I'm advised by my assistant here that I'm going to try Ken Lee again. So Ken, if you're there, hit star three. All right. Gotcha. Ken, welcome back to city council. You have up to three minutes.
I am here to, I, I didn't know what this law was, but I knew that there was a change. I know that it's been legal, you know, for a stretch now since the state Supreme Court ruled to possess and use drugs. And I understand people, there's a lot of people that, that understand people doing whatever they got to do to feel okay in this world. And when people want to change their life and want to quit doing drugs, it's 17% effective to engage in a therapeutic, talk therapy approach to stopping a habit, an addiction you have, whether it's alcohol or drugs. And 17% effective if you want to change your life. It probably shouldn't be a crime with, it should more likely be, I, so it sounds like at least, the laws that you're putting out there is not, habit is primarily a crime permissible, but refers people to, to treatment for possession. But, and I, I do want to take this minute since it's, since it's Costa Day, to thank this guy that sounds really like a great guy that's leaving the city government. And I especially also want to thank Kate Burke for having the courage of your convictions, Kate. Your loving people touched people's hearts and changed people's lives. And it's lonely and hard to have the courage of your convictions, but I believe you're on the right side of history. I'm sorry, I know I'm not supposed to talk directly to her, and I could not help myself, President Biggs. Thank you.
Consider yourself disciplined. All right, thank you so much, Ken, for participating. All right, that brings us to the end of public comment. And now I saw a couple of hands raised, and I'll start with Councilmember Kinnear and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Thanks. So there's a narrative out in our community by some of the business owners that we are decriminalizing drugs. And I just want to make it abundantly clear, that's not the case. We've actually engaged our legal team and Howard Delaney from municipal court to accommodate what the state Supreme Court has said. And I commend them for doing that, and I think this is a way forward. As many people have indicated, you're not going to get clean in jail because jail, that's where you can get drugs. And I would like the narrative to be changed, but I know that's difficult. This council is not that powerful in that we are going to legalize drugs. And so I would ask those folks that are engaged in that rhetoric to stop and think a moment about what you're saying, and that we do follow the law, and that is what we're doing here. Thanks.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, one of the big frustrations I have and have had is that we get these legal briefs, analyses, they give us a lot of info, but they're attorney-client privileged, we can't share them with the public. And a lot of times, there's some very important information in there. And just to piggyback, I think, on what Councilwoman Kinnear just shared, there has been, I think, a lot of, to some extent, some misinformation that's out there that suggests that this ordinance is in itself somehow changing drug laws or legalizing drug laws and, or legalizing drugs in the city of Spokane. And really, that's not the case. And we, and I can't really share the legal analysis that was provided to us because of the attorney-client privilege aspect to it. But one of the key points that's in there is simply that if we do not implement this ordinance, our officers will not be able to implement the law at all. And so in reality, if we want our officers to be able to issue these citations and hopefully direct people the resources and follow through with some of the accountability measures, we have to pass this ordinance in order to do that. And so I just wanted to make that point, that I think there's some misinformation, and you can disagree or maybe dislike the way the laws were changed at the state level, but I don't think that that necessarily changes anything about this ordinance. We, I feel like we really do need to put this in place so that we can enforce, enforce the rules. So I will leave it there, and I will be supporting.
Yeah, great points, both of you. I think people don't understand, if we didn't pass this ordinance, then the police could do nothing with drug possession. So I don't, people understand that. Other council commentary? All right, with that, let's go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Sinai. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. That brings us to the last ordinance of the evening and the year. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C36-161, adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage.
So just by way of background on this, some people have been asking me, how come they can't testify tonight on the budget? And that's because the way the budget process is set up is that we have budget hearings for weeks and weeks beforehand for people to testify before we write the final budget so that they can be heard and help formulate the budget as opposed to the night of. So there's no public testimony here, but fortunately, we had dozens of people testify over the last several weeks on several issues related to the budget. And again, on the way the budget process works is the mayor proposes a budget, and which she did on November 1st, and then the city council makes any changes to it on, for consideration on budget night. Along the way, for weeks and weeks dating back to October, we've been meeting with the mayor and her senior staff, and we had many differences earlier. We've closed just about all of them, not, not all of them. And this afternoon, we made some small amendments to our earlier amendments that we filed last week. And so you may or may not see the exact, exact budget that's there, but we have sent it to the reporter from the spokesman who covers this, to make sure that he has that, so he can publicize that. But council commentary. Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Yeah, I have enjoyed these last four years of our budget process and learning everything that goes into it. I just have really been interested in looking at having the council write their own budget along with the mayor, and then that's when you come together and compromise, rather than having the mayor write a budget and the council go in and negotiate that. And so that would be something that now that we have the wonderful Matt Boston, that maybe he could possibly look into spearheading that. And I think it would really in turn help the council get some more of their, their needs and wants in the budget. And so that's just something that I had talked to Tim Donovan about and to some of the council members about. And I think that that could be a really cool way for us as the council to get some of our priorities in there before, so that, you know, the negotiations can be a little different. So just my, my outgoing suggestions to the council. And, but I'm happy to support this budget. I feel like, Council President, you definitely put a lot of work into it these past years, and I feel really confident with your leadership behind there. And I think that we, we can move forward on this. So, thank you.
Well, and just as a result of your advocacy over these four years, we're closer to doing our own budget than we ever have been. And even next year, we'll be closer. So, thank you. Other council, councilmember Stratton.
Really quickly, I just want to, again, like Councilmember Cathcart did with the other issue, I want the community to understand that city council, in all of these discussions, in no way wants to defend the police department. Defund the police department. Sorry about that. We get, I don't know about anybody else, but I've gotten so many emails. Simply what, what I've tried to explain to people is that we have looked at department structure. We have looked at job classifications between, you know, classified positions, civil service, and those positions that aren't. Those have been really healthy discussions, and we've been open to having those discussions with everybody involved. But I just, this is just my time to say to the community, and I will be answering all of the emails, but we are not, we have not talked about it, and we have no plans to defund the Spokane Police Department. So that's, that's all I want to say.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I just want to be, I want you to be crystal clear. You said "defund," correct? Not "defend"? Okay.
I'm thinking about Councilmember Cathcart talking about the drug issue and the courts and "defund" is what I meant.
"Defund." And that's still D-E-F-U-N-D. Okay. So I'm Public Safety Chair. I do not want to defund the police department either. I don't think any of us do. The 2022 budget will fully fund our police department. The budget increased the police department's funding by approximately 6% from last year. That's a year-over-year increase of millions of dollars. I hope everybody heard that. The 2022 budget also increases overall police positions. The council supports our police department and is demonstrating that in this budget. We are not defunding the police. We've said it many, many times. I want to talk a little bit about CHHS funding. This proposed budget also prioritizes our Community Housing and Human Services Department. The administration's strike team has done a good job beginning to get CHHS back on track, and that's thanks to Eric Vinton, Marlin Fife. And now we will have a new director of that department. The budget, this budget will support their work and will ensure that we don't miss out on federal or state funding opportunities, and that is really important. And it also means that if we do the work, we can charge back an administrative fee and get reimbursed for that work, which was also missing without a director. So funding this work and the work of the CHHS department will pay for itself. And I just want to thank Council President and, and Councilmember Bethy Wilkerson, who I worked with as part of the subcommittee. It was a little painful at times. And I also want to thank Matt Boston and Tim Donovan because they lent a really critical piece to this process. Both very experienced people. And it wasn't just that they knew about the subject better, but were able to explain it to us in basic, plain English so that we weren't left scratching our heads. And if we asked questions, they were able to answer our questions clearly and concisely. I really appreciate that. So I'm really looking forward to passing this budget and getting a lot of work done for next year. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I guess I really just want to thank all the hard work from, well, everybody, but also, and especially Tim Donovan and Matt Boston, who I think has been an absolute rock star and has been fantastic through, through this process and, and really just a great, great hire for that position. He's been wonderful to work with. For me, I, I really believe that we should have crafted a budget that was a little bit more focused on economic development and a lot more focused on public safety. And that's my, that's just my preference. And I'm not going to suggest that this in any way defunds. And you're right, it does increase funding. I just don't think it does it enough. I think with a lot of what we're seeing right now in the community, more investment in public safety would really, really be beneficial, as well as investing in economic development. But I, I just think that we have options for, or alternative options that we could have considered in terms of looking, looking at that. So I, I'm not going to support the budget tonight. I do think that some of those other things should have been more strongly considered as part of this budget process. And I would just lastly end on a formal, I guess, request of the, the council president and the council that in next year's process, I think it would be wonderful if District One has a role or a seat on our budget subcommittee to help shape and craft and work on the budget process. And hopefully, it's a longer budget process, too. I know there were a lot of issues we couldn't control that shortened this. But a longer budget process that's really thoughtful, that definitely includes District One at the, at the table, would be fantastic. So I will leave it there.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. So yes, thank you, Council President and Councilmember Kinnear for the team on the budget. I just want to say, this has been the most open budget process that I'm aware of, where administration had input and open dialogue with council, and where council was afforded the same. In this budget, a lot of it was where the money was going to come from that was sometimes the rub in this budget from what the administration proposed. I too thank Matt Boston and Tim Donovan for really understanding those streams, those funding sources, and how they could be applied and used and protect the general fund as much as we possibly could. So I hear everyone. Matt Boston and I have already figured a way to start budgeting for next year. So as soon as we catch our breath, Councilmember Cathcart, those discussions will start along with the education piece about, again, the revenue streams that are available to us, how they can be used applicably for the reason they were designed and going forward. And I think we will have a better outcome, but this was a good outcome this year. It was a lot of back and forth. Again, nobody got everything they wanted, which is always the sign of a good budget, in my opinion. So I will be supporting this as we go forward.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Mum.
So I am so lucky to be able to have the opportunity tonight to vote on the eighth budget of the city of Spokane. We have had many, many challenges. I have to tell you, I looked back at some history, and I had mentioned this earlier in the day when I got to say goodbye to many of the employees I've had the pleasure of working with over the decades, that when I was a cover reporter, 19 years old, in the old city hall, back in 1981, the big, big story was the city budget and how much to put toward police and firefighters. So the more we change, the more we stay the same. But what I want to say is, here, 40 years later, we're still talking about the same things. And please do, in the future, focus on the revenue. Because when you just focus on the expenses, you're just really kind of, you know, stuck. You're kind of shuffling deck chairs. And if you put more in one department, you have to take it away from another. And you have to focus on the needs first, rather than the wants. And I know the mayor wanted a lot of things, but we had to do the needs first. And we had this amazing opportunity with the ARPA funds for the wants. And so I have had the honor of serving on that committee. And I'm super excited about the process because we're reaching out to the citizens, a direct line, so they can tell us what we can do next with those funds. And I think we're cautiously moving forward with that. And very excited to see how you allocate that in the future because I think that investment can take Spokane to the next level and help with so many things, with housing, with some of our criminal justice needs. And yes, of course, the economy, which is coming out of an unprecedented pandemic. So I look forward to supporting all the budget amendments that are coming forward tonight that have been laid out. Thank you.
And I wanted to extend my appreciation to everybody involved, councilmembers Kinnear and Wilkerson, all the other council members who, in my judgment, over the last almost six years, were more involved in this budget process than they've ever been before and will be even more involved the following year. I wanted to thank the administration did so much hard work, Tanya Wallace and Paul and Josie and their team. Obviously, you've heard plenty of Matt Boston and Tim Donovan who really helped us, and other council staff that helped us, Hannah Lee Allers particularly, and Brian McClatchy checking in on us and keeping us on track. So a lot there. Mayor Woodward, Johnny Perkins. There was just hours and hours and hours. And at the end, I think, as since council's in charge of the budget at the end, it's, can we have a process that opens up and hears from as many voices as possible and tries to make these such difficult judgments? How much money for preventative and upstream? How much money for people bleeding and just the emergency that we got to save people's lives? And everything in between? And as has been said, there's so many wants, and frankly, there's more needs than we can fund even. And so it's really challenging, and it's hard to say no. And people remember the no's, they don't remember the yeses. We said so many yeses in this. And as Councilmember Wilkerson said, a lot of it was being creative and using different funding sources. But I think we stuck to the kind of financial principles that has really pulled the city out of some really dire economic times and financial times. And that is that we use one-time money for one-time expenses, and we don't try to hire a bunch of people with one-time money. We put money aside when we've got labor contracts coming up. We keep our contingency a reserve fund, our reserve fund. Because when those reserve funds are well-funded, our financing costs, which is way more than our operational, stays low. So there's just lots of things, and we're, people who are newer to the city, we're all learning that together. And some of us have been around a medium time, like myself, others longer. And so we try to put it all together and come up with something that works. And again, I feel like we worked this process more openly, with more voices, better than ever, against some challenging situations, and we have more work to do. We made it clear that we shouldn't include ARPA in the budget, but we're still going to consider the ARPA things, especially for things like some fire trucks and other programs that people know that we need, but is really more ARPA, not budget. So for those people who didn't get what they wanted in this budget and want more for infrastructure for homelessness or for public safety and other things, we are going to look at those things in ARPA, which are one-time funds. But anyway, just my great appreciation, and I'm so glad that we've got to the end of this process. And thank you, councilmembers Burke and Mum, for sharing your wisdom for 2023 budget. And we'll try to take that into account. And again, I think next year will be even better. So with that, let's go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Excuse me. Were you going to accept the memo and the changes in the memo?
Oh, I thought we already did that, but we haven't done that yet. All right. So Ms. Fister reminds me that we have to have a vote to essentially accept the memo that we distributed late this afternoon, along with the Excel spreadsheet that we filed with Ms. Fister, as an amendment to the budget ordinance. Is there someone that will make that motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? All right. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of accepting those documents as an amendment to the budget, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right. So the budget ordinance is amended, and now I'll do a roll call. Thank you, Ms. Fister. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. The budget passes six to one and goes into effect immediately under our charter. And that, I believe, will be the last ordinance of 2021 and the last votes for councilmembers Burke and Mum. Thank you for helping us do that. And now we have plenty of people who want to speak at open forum. Eleven folks, I count. And again, same thing. We'll hit star three to raise your hand, and then when you're done, hit star three to lower your hand. I'm going to start with Jason Green, if you're out there. Jason, hit star three. Jason, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, City Council President. I wanted to talk to you guys about using your voice. So we have a tent city parked out in front of your, your building today, and it's, I guess it's quite a, you know, a little ironic because it's in the first year of Councilmember Burke's tenure. She was chained up in front of city hall, standing in support of a tent city, and here we are in her last year. And we're back at it again because really, nothing has changed in this Greek tragedy of a city we have where we don't plan anything. And at the end, we end up spending $356,000 for 84 days to put people in, in motels while the, you know, the city talks about how many beds there's available. So I want to talk to you a little bit about, you know, using your voice and just the total lack of shelter beds in our system. We have over 60 tents out front and over 100 people sitting out here. And there's nothing coming from the city as to what's the plan here. Because even if, let's pretend there's, that some beds available tonight, we know there's not the 100 that there are down here. And it's about, these people aren't shelter adverse. They're shelter adverse when it comes to who's operating it, where the building is at. Some of these folks can't walk two miles to Truth Ministries. Or what the structure is of the facility. A lot of these folks have partners. And when you only have shelter availability for men in our system, you know, where are the husbands and wives, boyfriends and girlfriends supposed to go? Because every facility that, that would allow that, which every facility now is just canon because the city, against its own RCW or code or municipal because the city, against its own RCW, or code, or municipal code, however you call it, went ahead and shut down Salvation Army to bed. So, where do you want these folks to go? You know, Jules Helping Hands submitted a press release saying, "We're ready, we'll lean in." What can we do to help? And in four days of a protest out here, there has literally been not one word from the mayor's office, and very, very, very little coming out of city council. So, it's time to you guys start acting like you represent everybody in the community, not just those that are housed. And it's unfortunate you continue on the Zoom calls for city council, because you essentially eliminate all of the homeless individuals, because you ask for somebody to sit on the phone for an hour and fifty-four minutes at this point to listen to you. And then, on top of that, you need, you want their first name, last name, and home address, just to register to have a conversation with our city. It's time to get back into in-person. Every business is open, it's time city hall opens. It's time you guys stand up and use your voice and support the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, I'd like to invite Joe Adder. Joe, if you're there, if you want to hit star three.
I think he may have left, he's not feeling well.
Okay.
Yeah, he had mentioned me, he just wanted to let all of you know that he's very thankful for what we passed earlier, and for supporting Family Promise.
Great, thank you. All right, Kim Schmidt, if you want to hit star three.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Kim, welcome back to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Sorry, the robot voice lady said I lowered my hand, so I must have not lowered it after last time I spoke. Thank you, President Beggs. I called to literally break the rules. Councilmember Burke and councilmember Mum, we're gonna miss you guys so much. I've lived up here almost three years now, and every single week, I've been involved in the city council meeting in some respect. And you guys have just, in your own separate and very special ways, just really taught me so much about this city that I now live in. So I really appreciate it, and I'm gonna miss you guys a lot. But since I'm on the phone, I might as well go into something else. So I sent an email earlier. I feel that I haven't been getting the appropriate response to records requests from the police department, and I expressed my concerns. And what those concerns were, we have anywhere from eleven to sixteen police officers out at a monthly protest. And body cam footage is subject to public records requests. And with anywhere from eleven to sixteen officers in this one, there's been some months I'm getting zero body cam footage back, there's some months where I'm getting very little. I'm speaking in terms of, normally I receive, oh, ten to twelve hours worth of footage, sometimes more, and then I started receiving about fifteen minutes. So Chief Midal did respond to me, and I look forward to seeing how that's being resolved. And please, I'm in full support of the protests going on outside of the city hall right now. Please listen to them and hear their needs. I know city council has probably been the most responsive out of all the public entities in the city. But please, do what you can. I mean, these are human beings. They deserve to have a warm, safe place. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you would hit star three and lower your hand, the next person I'm gonna invite is Claire Jin to hit star three, and after Claire, Kenneth Crary, and Brian Gasset. Claire, are you there? Not seeing Claire's hand raised, so Kenneth Crary, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right, Kenneth, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm just here to speak on the homelessness here in Spokane. I'm formerly a homeless person. I got almost eight years clean off everything. I haven't been to jail in over seven years. The city, I've changed to this city because it was a beautiful city. I've moved up here a little over four years ago. The atrocity that I see with the homeless situation is devastating. I don't know how people can drive down the street and go home and look in the mirror and be okay with it. I myself cannot. I'm employed by Jules Helping Hands. I do this because I'm compassionate about it, I have compassion, I've been there, I know what it takes to get off drugs and be off the streets out of homelessness. It takes people being compassionate, it takes people caring. It takes shelter beds that people can actually get into and access. It takes wraparound services. You know, I've been outside of city hall right now for four days. I would like to say, these are my people, they are my people, but the community of Spokane too are my people. The outpouring of love we see from the community way outweighs the love and compassion we see from our city council. Something needs to be done. Whatever it is, it needs to be figured out, and it needs to be done. There's over a hundred people out here right now that wants to be in beds. They want to be, they don't want to be out here, but they're showing their support for themselves right now. You know, I just implore the city to do something. Add some beds that people can actually access instead of one or two hours a night with a check-in time. The reality is, there's thirty-three beds. There's twenty-seven in House of Charity, and there's six at Truth Ministries. HOC is, um... Cannon is full at capacity. Hope House for Women is full at capacity. I just got an email from both of them saying they're full at capacity. You know, you guys closed down the Whale Shelter after you made it impossible for any person that's been on the street for any amount of time to get into. And then you closed it down. You took all those beds away. You know, the city saying there's ninety, ninety-plus beds available last night? That's not even, that's not even true, that's not even close to the truth. If that was true, they wouldn't be adding forty beds to a hotel. That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thanks for your words this evening. Next, Brian Gasset, if I'm pronouncing that right. Star three, Brian. Not seeing Brian. How about Bill, just first name Bill, if you're there, Bill, hit star three. All right, Bill, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I came to Spokane five years ago. I got transferred over here from DOC and did great, above it. But there were some things that I saw that were just absolutely mind-boggling with the homeless. I'm from Seattle, Everitt, Snoke County, King County area. And there isn't this much, I don't know how to say it, incompetence in the way things are going. And then I talked to a couple people at the Oxford Houses, and they said, "Well, talk to Jules." I didn't know who that was. And finally, I became homeless from the Oxford House, because they shut it down. And I've been out here for two and a half, almost three years on the streets. And I know for a fact that it wouldn't have lasted that long, wouldn't last this long in Everett. And they actually have put people into Oxford Houses, other rooms for rent. And they're renting a lot, a lot more than here. But anyhow, so I finally found out who Jules was, and started talking to Ken. And I've been trying to volunteer with them in every chance I can get, because they are what my people, the homeless people, look up to. My only thought is, you might want to hear them out. They have great ideas, and everybody out here loves them. That's all I got.
Thanks so much for participating. We appreciate your words. Next, Julie Garcia, if you're there, Julie, if you want to hit star three.
Good evening, Council President.
Yep, welcome to City Council, Julie. You have up to three minutes.
Hi, good evening, City Council President and City Council members. I'm coming here again for my yearly visit to you folks, because there are a hundred and sixteen people sitting on the doorsteps of city hall once again. Again, we are lacking shelter beds. I don't even want to have that argument anymore, because we all know they don't exist. Eight hundred ninety to a hundred beds, as the city stated this morning, is open in our system. We all know that that is not the truth. There is a real-time bed availability, and the city is part of it. The city can see those every day. The emails that I've got today state that there are twenty-six beds at HOC. I don't know how our homeless friends are to know that besides through us, because they just had norovirus and were closed, so the access to that bed has been barrier. Hope House was one above capacity. Cannon, plus their hotel vouchers are all full. There are six beds at Truth Ministries today. And UGM has some beds available for Low Barrier, but nobody knows the amount there. If you're experiencing homelessness in our city, how do you find out this information? You don't. What if you're a family or a couple? Thank you for opening beds up at Family Promise, that is much appreciated to the outreach out here. We don't like seeing children dying and freezing on our streets. But there's a lot of people in the downtown core that have zero places to go. And that's just the folks that are sitting on your steps. There are hundreds outside the downtown core that have nowhere to go. And the only answer is Low Barrier beds. It's a win-win for everybody. I'm not understanding why the council doesn't use their voices. This is important. There are people sleeping on the steps of our city hall, and not one person. That's incorrect. Thank you, councilmember Kinnear, for reaching out. But other than that, there isn't one other person in the entire city administration or city council that has reached out to find out why they are sitting on the steps of their city. I know that this is a lot of people out here, and I just want you to know what they're actually doing. There's a hundred and sixteen people that have been kicked out of shelters all over the city, and they are maintaining outside of city hall. They are being good neighbors, this camp is clean, they are getting along with each other, simply for the fact that they want you folks to see that they're not shelter adverse, they're not shelter resistant. There is nothing to resist, there are no beds. We can get a hundred and sixteen of the folks from downtown to sit on front of the steps, to protest for their own selves, and they give a hundred percent? Can you imagine what would happen if the city gave five percent? If they put in half as much effort as these folks are to maintain?
Julie?
Thank you.
Thanks for participating in all that you do. I appreciate it. Thanks. All right, I'm gonna do a call-through of the people who didn't answer before, and then we have a few more speakers. Claire Jin, Brian Gasset, or Gasset? Either of you are there, hit star three. All right, then, next is Nicolette Occultry. All right, Nicolette, welcome back to City Council.
Good evening. I want to talk about the elephant outside city hall and take what little time I have to share a bit about my own perspective. Just over twenty-five years ago, I was homeless with my mother on the streets of Spokane. Unable to find shelter that would separate us or leave me out on the cold alone, we lived in our van. There were some nights when I wasn't sure if I'd ever wake up, I was so cold I couldn't feel my hands. This was in the nineties, and we were literally being hunted by serial killers. Other homeless women we knew were disappearing, and it was getting colder and colder and colder. And we didn't have enough gas to keep the car running. People around us were getting desperate for shelter. Someone would commit small crimes for three hops and a cot, looking for hotel rooms, using drugs to suppress hunger, and stay alert at night to watch for thieves and killers. I was only twelve at the time, so a little too young to see a world like that. Not everyone who is homeless is a criminal. But crime becomes enticing when homelessness is worse than prison or more dangerous. Suffice to say, the problem of homelessness in Spokane is not new. And it's not simple to solve. You can't just throw money at it and hope the problem will go away. Folks who are experiencing homelessness or have in the past don't just have one story. There are many different reasons people become homeless and stay homeless. And they're not lost causes. I was not a lost cause. As you might imagine, complicated problems are rarely solved with simple solutions. This is a complicated problem that requires a complex and multifaceted solution. In my opinion, more needs to be done to focus on preventative measures, not the least of which is strengthening tenant rights and resources. It's also imperative that we fast-track a platform for public-facing data. So there's no argument about how many beds are may or may not be available, and so that those who are actually looking for a bed can find them. There also needs to be a deep investigation into the amount of money being spent on the specific types of solutions we choose to employ to offer these beds and resources to those who are experiencing homelessness. Forty-three thousand dollars a year per bed for Cannon, for example, is not a fiscally sustainable solution. Not all homeless folks are addicts or those who suffer from mental illness, but some are, and some do. And in those instances, not only do we have to offer ways for them to get the treatment they need, but we also need to work harder, not smarter, to fund that treatment. During a meeting with Councilwoman Wilkerson, she mentioned a very brilliant point about looking into using Medicaid to fund some of the beds in facilities that provide medical treatment for addiction and mental health services. This is just one suggestion I've never seen made before, and that I think works smarter and not harder to create humane and fiscally responsible actions to address this very complex problem that will not go away with just more money being thrown at it. In my very last remaining seconds, I also just wanted to say that thank you, Councilwoman Mum and Councilwoman Burke, for all of your hard work and everything you've done. And we're sad to see you go, but look forward to seeing what you do in the next chapter of your life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. Next, I have Ken Lee, if you want to hit star three, Ken. All right, welcome back to City Council. Ken, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. The reason there's so much confusion about how many shelter beds are available is, the federal court has said that if there are not shelter beds available for people, that you cannot make it a crime for them to do the necessary things that humans must do to survive in public. And you're violating the spirit of that law, of that ruling. This, the hundred-some people encamped out on your soup is enough people, you do not have shelter beds for them, and I know, and all the confusion about it is just bull. Everyone knows that we don't have shelter beds for the thousands unsheltered in our city, and they are suffering. We're violating not just the spirit of that ruling, we're violating our own laws. You've got an anti-profiling law that's stricter than any I've ever seen. It is not acceptable in your city for the police to profile based on economic status or housing status, and they are constantly profiling based on that. And they talk about criminality, the criminality of these people, they should be in shelters, they should be forced to... they should be forced to, and they're not. These are residents, these are Spokaneites. Most of them are from Spokane and they're residents here and the courts have said they have the same rights as every other citizen. And our city says, no, they don't. And you're operating outside of the law. I kind of just furious. I hear all this nice talk and we've got a new office in our government, that's City Rights Office. And I hear these nuts, sunny words tonight and I think, no, this is all very reasonable. But in reality, out here on the street, people are dying and we've got, our first line of outreach is police criminal enforcement. And there are people with 15 or more misdemeanor violations that have a long criminal record of being reported public. It's illegal to fall through the cracks in this town. And having 100 people in one place makes it at least obvious. You cannot enforce those laws that require shelter bed availability. And it puts a lie to this sham that it's legitimate to take this approach that's attacking people, harming people. People, I'm not looking for you guys to solve this problem, just stop attacking people, please. It's, dump trucks full, dump trucks full every day of people's lifesaving gear gets pulled off the streets and discarded. And we have people dying of exposure out here. It's wet cold right now and people die when, I think your stuff lasts.
Ken, we're at the end of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your words tonight. One more speaker signed up and that is Anwar Peace. Anwar, if you'd like to hit star three. Welcome back to City Council, Anwar. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening. Recently learning the city government will be conducting a forensic audit of the fire department's overtime budget. It reminded me about last year's Forbes magazine story about overtime issues with the Seattle police officers. Forbes found 20 Seattle police employees out earn the police chief salary of 29, excuse me, $290,000 due to those officers' overtime issues. One officer was making $415,000 a year. Spokane is eager to learn the results of the fire department's forensic audit. But Spokane is also eager to have the city government conduct the forensic audit of the police department in order to begin a true parody between these two public safety entities in the future. We as a community has watched the city government allow the police department to become its own little magical fiefdom where standard HR practices nor normal budgetary processes take place like other city entities have to do. We as a community have watched the police department purchase an armored vehicle with no public process or input. Those funds could have been used to buy a much-needed fire truck instead. Speaking of vehicles, we as a community have watched the city government allow the police department to pilfer from a dedicated city loan program, which was meant to quickly update the squad car fleet. And instead, half of those funds were used for police equipment. Because of these facts, the squad car fleet is considered to be in a dangerous and dilapidated state, which could lead the police union to file a grievance. Plus, there has never been a true accounting of all that police equipment that was purchased with these funds for the squad car fleet city loan program. The issue surrounding the lack of squad cars and police equipment has been recently spun by the police guild to its officers as the city council defunding the police, which the city council has not. In fact, they've increased the budget for them every time the police is asked. All of these factors for me are huge red flags. Either financial misconduct has taken place or poor management is taking place and should be looked into. And as you can see, this is, there is a clear need for the police department to have a forensic audit. As well, there needs to be a performance audit to examine police 911 call service and traffic stops. For the past six months, Spokane community groups have requested this data from the city. Also, at this very same time, King County and Seattle Police agencies are in the process of performing these performance audits as well. The transparency of these audits alone will aid in restoring the public trust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar. That brings us to the end of open forum. And that will bring us to the end of our meeting. And I'll just take personal privilege, after my second year of being council president and working with you all, I so appreciate all of you on council and all your participation and all the people who testify. I don't think you realize how big an impact your personal lived experiences make on us. They do. And so we appreciate that you fighting through the COVID restrictions of participating on the phone. And we do look forward to being back in person and seeing you in your full selves. I want to especially thank Terry Fister, our city clerk, who just dutifully comes and spends her evenings with us. Hannah Lee Allers for being our producer extraordinaire. I've got some TV operators up there in Channel 5. We have a lot of city staff who are working behind the scenes, both for council and the mayor, for everyone. So please, everybody, take some time in these next couple of weeks to the end of the year to appreciate what you have that's good and those that you love and who love you. And again, as I often say, take care of yourself and take care of someone else. There are plenty of people who need all of us to do a little more for them. And remember that in Spokane, we all belong. Have a great end of 2021, a great 2022, and we are adjourned.